Scouts, eyes front!
Right, left, right, left, yeah. Come here! Right, right, and there, turn! Stand up, first! Order, standards! Right, standard, ease! Right, right, turn! Right, standard, ease!
Grace to you and peace from God our Father and the Lord Jesus Christ. We remember with thanksgiving and sorrow those whose lives in world wars and conflicts of the past and present have been given and taken away. We pray for all who in bereavement, disability and pain continue to suffer the consequences of fighting and terror. We commit ourselves to work in penitence and faith for reconciliation between nations, that all peoples may live together in freedom, justice and peace. Let us remember the kindness of God and his favour to us in our time of need. Let us remember the courage, devotion to duty and the self-sacrifice of the men and women in our armed forces, the toil, endurance and suffering of those who were not in uniform, the support of those who sent us help from afar or who came and stood by our side. Let us remember those who were wounded in the fight, those who perished in air raids at home, those who fell in battle and are buried at sea or in some corner of a foreign field, and especially those whom we have known and loved whose place is forever in our hearts. Let us remember those who are our enemies, whose homes and hearts are as bereft as ours, whose dead lie also in a living tomb of everlasting remembrance. Let us remember those who came back, those whose lives still bear the scars of war, those who lost sight or limbs or reason, those who lost faith in God and hope for humanity. Let us remember the continuing grace of God, whose love holds all souls in life and to whom none is dead but all are alive forever. As this world forgets, we will remember you.
They shall grow not old as we who are left grow old; age shall not weary them, nor the years condemn them. At the going down of the sun and in the morning we will remember them.
Right, right, turn! Stand up, first! Curry, stand up!
When you go home, tell the lovers and say, "For your tomorrow we give our today."
Almighty and eternal God, from whose love in Christ we cannot be parted either by death or life, receive our prayers and thanksgivings for all whom we remember this day, fulfilling them the purpose of your love and bring us all with them to your eternal joy through Christ our Lord. Amen. In memory of those who died, may we be better people and in gratitude to God, may we live as those who are not their own but who are bought with a price. Amen.
Dafyev, Aftalins, and this round ceremony of men and council makes our recente way more real.
Right, standard, ease!
This will now be laid on the following order: I Sheriff, MP for Harlequay, Chief Detective, Leader of the Council, Armed Forces Champion.
Stand up, first! Order, standards!
Royal Navy Representative, Royal Naval Association, Fifth Regiment Royal Artillery, P Battery, Eight Trifles, Royal Air Force, Seven One Engineer Regiments, One Five B, One Five Zero Transport Regiment, RLC. Ex-service Associations, Cultural Guards Association, Royal Artillery Association, Royal Engineers Association, Royal Signals Association, Green Howards Association, Durham Light Infantry Association, Parachute Regiment Association, Royal Corps of Transports, Royal Service Corps ASOP, Royal Air Force Association, Royal British Legion, Saffir, the Harlequay Armed Forces and Veterans Practice Club. Uniforms and laundry public services, Senior Fire Officer, Senior Police Officer, North East Ambulance Service, Piltese and Harlequay NHS Foundation Trust, RNLI, Red Cross Association, St John's Ambulance Brigade, Salvation Army, Commercial Navy, Harlequay Freemasons, Harlequay Ambulance Charity. Cadet Forces and Youth Associations, Sea Cadets, Marine Cadet Dispatchments, Army Cadets, 473 Army Air Cadets, Girl Gardening, Tees Valley Scouts, Hat Court Futures, Youth Team. Local Organizations, Alice House Hospice, Eights and Aces Veterans Motorcycle Clubs, El Wick Range Car Home, GMB Union T-25 Branch, Harlequay Borough Councilors, Harlequay Conservative Association, Harlequay Constituency Labour Party, Harlequay Labour Group, Harlequay Lions Club, Harlequay Round Table, Harlequay Trades Union Council, Harlequay Funeral Directors, Rotary Club of Harlequay, Bytonstall College of Science, History of Harlequay, Pussing Seats and First, Radio Harlequay, Reform UK, Representatives of Churches and Religious Denominations, Unison Harlequay LG. The public will now be invited to lay their reads.
In the power of the Spirit and in union with Christ, let us pray to the Father. How generous is your goodness, O God! How great is your salvation! How faithful is your love! Help us to trust in you in trial, to praise you in deliverance, and to rejoice before you with overflowing hearts. Lord, hear us. Lord, graciously hear us. God of joy and gladness, hear our prayer for the peace of this world and bring us at last, with all our brothers and sisters, to the peace of that city where you live and reign. Lord, hear us. Lord, graciously hear us. Go before us, O Lord, with the blessings of your goodness and guide all those you call to authority in the way of your justice, the knowledge of your liberty and the wisdom of your gentleness. Lord, hear us. Lord, graciously hear us. Lord, hear us! Lord, graciously hear us! Lord, welcome into your calm and peaceful kingdom those who have departed this present life to be with you. Grant them rest in a place with the spirits of the just and give them the life that knows no age, the reward that passes not away. Lord, hear us! Lord, graciously hear us! In the moment of silence we offer the prayers of our hearts, our personal prayers to God. As Jesus taught us, so we have the courage to pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive them that trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen. Go forth into the world in peace. Be of good courage; hold fast to that which is good. Render to no one evil for evil. Strengthen the faint-hearted; support the weak; help the afflicted; honour everyone. Love and serve the Lord, rejoicing in the power of the Holy Spirit. And may the blessing of Almighty God, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit be upon you and remain with you always. Amen.
Right! Right! Turn! Stand up, Beres! Carry! Stand up! Stand up, Beres! Right! Turn! Quick! March! Right! Right! And left! Turn!